It's now 5:30 PM. I'd like to call the May 9th meeting of the Midland Independent School District Board of Trustees. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome to Booney Fine Arts Academy Auditorium. We're pleased to meet here. This is our regular meeting place now for the monthly Board of Trustees meeting. Our first item will be our Presentations, Recognitions, Award Announcements. Dr. Warren?
Team, we have an outstanding way to start our meeting. We have a lot of recognitions to give. We're gonna first start, though, with one of our own. David Garcia, our Chief Financial Officer, forever, has received a commendation from TASBO, the Texas Association of Business Officials, Commitment to Excellence Award. And we have two very special guests here tonight. Erica Lindsay and Claire Ronigan, Ronahan, from AXA LLC. And they sponsor the award through TASBO. And we're very proud for them to be here to present this, the Commitment to Excellence Award, to David Garcia. David, come on up. Ladies, come on up, please.
Good evening. President Davis, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Warren, thank you for having us here this evening. On behalf of TASBO and AXA, we are extraordinarily pleased to recognize excellence in education on any and all levels. We are a longtime supporter on both the national and state level of our educators and all of their senior administration. This evening, we would like to present the Commitment to Excellence Award to Midland ISD's Chief Financial Officer, David Garcia.
(applause) Woodrow? Wait a minute, we gotta get the official. Thank you very much. Thank you for your continued leadership in business operations for us and for the state. You bet. All right. Now, Board and visitors, parents, May is always my most favorite Board meeting because we recognize a lot of our students. And this is why we're here, and this is why we do what we do. We have our all-stars here tonight. And first of all, students, understand, young men and young ladies, we are very proud of everything that you've done, both just this year and all four years that you've been here in high school, if you've been here in high school for four years. But the things that you've done this year to earn those awards, we're very, very proud of you, and we're glad that you were able to come. Board, we're gonna step in front of the table, and we're gonna shake our students' hands as they come up, and seeing Mr. Moore there, ready to go. I believe we're starting at Coleman High School, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go.
It's my pleasure this evening to introduce Coleman High School's 2015-2016 Shining Star, Her parents are Salsa Duran and Hector Duran of El Paso. They are unable to attend this evening. Lourdes took part in the Coleman High School Culinary Arts Program as the Executive Chef, and was a member of the Coleman Cooks Program, which provided meals for campus activities and the MISD School Board. She was a leader in the March of Dimes Student Campaign, which led to Coleman High School being named the top contributing secondary school in 2015 and 2016. She was an active member in the United Way Fundraising Campaign. Lourdes plans to attend college this fall and pursue a career as a neonatal nurse practitioner. Lourdes Duran.[364.41][364.41](applause)
Early College High School is proud to present Jacoby Gonzalez.[375.62][375.62](applause) Jacoby is the son of Albert and Cynthia Gonzalez, and they are here in attendance. He has completed over 160 hours of community service, tutored in math and English at the high school and college level. He has been an assistant in an elementary classroom. He's a member of the National Honor Society and of Texas Scholars. He's ranked in the top 10% of his high school class. He is a four-year academic letterman. He is the valedictorian of the 2016 class of early college high school. He has earned his Associate of Art in General Studies. Jacoby plans on attending UTPB, where he plans on majoring in pediatrics. We're very proud of Jacoby.[437.12][437.12](applause)
I think that's what we're gonna do, is do all the LHS ones first, and then... Okay, the, first of all, the shining stars, top five for LHS are valedictorian, Thomas Rubio. Thomas Rubio, come on out, okay. Thomas is the son of Abner Mildred Rubio. He's an AP Scholar. He's National Honor Society Vice President. He participates, he was a regional tennis and regional orchestra player this year. He's on team court. He plans on attending Texas Tech University and be a pre-med student, majoring in biology. Our salutatorian is Alawashwan Akimi, or Sean.[542.88][542.88](applause) Sean is our salutatorian. She's the daughter of Tidaleo and Patrick Akimi. She's a Lee High School Orchestra member. She's in the orchestra. She's part of the Cornerstone Church Childcare Volunteer Group, and she's going to Duke University to be pre-med pediatrics.[571.29][571.29](applause) Number three in the class is Taylor Warren. Taylor is the daughter of Dr. Ryder and Jill Warren. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in mathematics, mathematics and minor in music. She's the president of the Corral Program, and she was the homecoming queen, the daughters of the revolution, good citizen, and she was, yeah. He's the son of Shannon and Tony Willis. He's number four in the class, National Honor Society, played varsity basketball, counselor of opportunity at camp, and he plans to attend Texas Tech and study cell and molecular biology.[646.54][646.54](applause) Miranda is the daughter of Mark and Garcia Martinez. She's National Hispanic Recognition Scholar. She's the president of the National Honor Society. She's a member of Model United Nations. She volunteers at Midland Memorial Hospital, and she's majoring in biology at Cornell Next are our scholarship winners. Cade Hicks is the recipient of the Joseph P. Baresi Scholarship. He's the son of Scott and Tracy Hicks. He's an all-state academic football, he was on the all-state academic football team. He was the varsity football captain this year, and he plans on attending Texas Tech University and majoring in political science. The Julie Conaway Memorial Scholarship winner is Harris Holliday.[742.62][742.62](applause) He's the son of Tommy and Jolene Holliday. He's a section leader in band. He's a volunteer at the Bynum School, and he plans to pursue nursing at Angelo State The MISD Board Scholarship winner is Carlos Estrada.[770.48][770.48](applause) He's the son of Norma and Freddie Estrada. He's the Vice President of AVID, Peer Assistance and Leadership Skills, PAL. He's a camp leader, and he plans on attending Midland College for two years and UTPB to And the MISD Memorial Scholarship winner is Bailey Wallace.[802.62][802.62](applause) Bailey is the daughter of Michelle and Robert Wallace. She's a Rotary Club Student of the Week. She's in Students in Philanthropy. She's their vice president. She played soccer. She volunteers at Manor Park, and she plans on attending Texas Tech University and pursuing Next, I want to introduce to you our National Merit finalist and National Merit finalist scholarship winner, Alexa Mamalidis.[838.88][838.88](applause) She's the daughter of Mitch and Barbara Mamalidis. She's an AP Scholar, choir officer. She planned, she does dance, art, and soul dance. She has been on two mission trips to Honduras, and she's going to NYU to major in linguistics and minor in dance.[862.62][862.62](applause) And then the recipient of the Texas Caucus Black School Board Member Scholar, Academic Scholarship is Allison Valdez.[886.88][886.88](applause) She's the daughter of Marcella Valdez. She was in the UIL Barber Jordan Essay Contest. She was a state finalist. She's the AVID Secretary. She's on the Be the Change team, Keep Midland Beautiful, and she's planning on playing basketball at Western Texas College.[913.12][913.12](applause) And I'd also like to introduce the members of our Ready, Set, Teach. These are the ones that are in that program. First of all, we have Ashlyn Barber.[929.88][929.88](applause) At this time, Mr. Pittkin's gonna introduce you to a couple of young people that made it to World.
Thank you. I had a couple of students this year, what they do is in the dean's list of robotics, what they, every year, they select a person who has leadership to their school and also to their teams. And Juwan Packer.[1105.12][1105.12](applause) The reason why we're talking about this is what it is, is in Lubbock, they were selected on the semifinalist list, went to San Antonio, or 14 states, and they were selected on the finalist list, went to Alabama to the World. There's 40 nations there, and Juwan Packer won. He's one of the 10 that won. So he won.[1131.41][1131.41](applause) So he's gonna receive scholarships, eventually he'll end up doing that. He'll get a letter from FIRST, to any university he wants to go to. He'll go to MIT this summer to opening for FIRST. They're gonna fly both of us there to show us the campuses and everything. He gets $200 tickets to Southwest Airlines, $100 Amazon. He's got like 17 things we're gonna give him, a bunch of stuff. So he was a winner. So thank you, Juwan.[1163.04][1163.04](applause)
Just while they're getting in place, just wanna let you know that these are abbreviated bios on these students. If we sat here and listed everything that they did, it'd take all night. So I understand that they do a lot more than what we're listing here. All right, we'll start with our shining stars. Our number five ranked student is Janira Baldabinos, and I don't believe she was able to make it with us tonight, but we certainly don't wanna leave her out. She's the number five. She was a Texas Scholar, member of National Honor Society. Number five was Janira Baldabinos.[1236.04][1236.04](applause) Our number four ranked student is Charles Schmidt.[1243.73][1243.73](applause) Charles is the son of David and Tony Schmidt. His honors and recognitions include he's a four-year academic letterman, he's a seven varsity letters in cross-country and track, academic all-state, Rotary Club Student of the Week, US Track and Field All-American, three-time all-district cross-country team member, Optimus Club Student, National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, and a Catoica Court member. He's the Vice President of the Spanish National Honor Society, and I mentioned that he is a very successful track and field student. He's also works with one-to-one tutoring, Midland Recording Library, First United Methodist Church, among other volunteer programs. Charles Schmidt.[1290.83][1290.83](applause) Our number three ranked student is Cassidy Lauren Hale.[1297.73][1297.73](applause) Cassidy is the daughter of Casey and Tanya Hale. She's an academic All-American, all-state first team in swimming, Midland Swim Team Captain, and former Vice President of the Latin Club. Midland High Varsity Swim Team member for four years. She volunteers at Midland Memorial Hospital. She plans to attend Texas A&amp;M to study biology. After graduation, she wants to go to medical school to become a cardiothoracic surgeon. Cassidy Lauren Hale.[1328.04][1328.04](applause) Our salutatorian for this year is Claire Lancaster.[1335.88][1335.88](applause) Claire is the daughter of Scott and Kimberly Lancaster. She's an AP Scholar, Student Council President, four-year basketball letterman, three-year volleyball letterman. She volunteers with upward basketball as a referee. She plans on attending Texas A&amp;M University and majoring in biomedical science. Claire Lancaster.[1358.91][1358.91](applause) And the 2016 valedictorian is Eric Brendan Cam.[1366.12][1366.12](applause) Eric is the son of Chan and Marlena Cam. He's a member of the American Mensa Society, MHS Catoico Prom King, National Merit Commended Scholar, and he's an Opportunity Camp Counselor. Camp Counselor, excuse me. He will attend either Stanford or Harvard, and I think he's decided on Stanford, is that correct? Stanford University, and will graduate with a Bachelor of Mechanical Engineering and a Doctor of Business Administration degrees. As an adult, he plans to become a CEO of a growing company and the father of a successful, loving family.[1404.12][1404.12](applause) And that's our shining stars for this year.[1413.12][1413.12](applause) Okay, next are our scholarship recipients. And the first one needs to get back. Chad, you need to go back up. Your first, I'll skip you and come back to you, that way you don't have to run. Okay. The first scholarship recipient is the winner of the MISD Julie Conaway Memorial Scholarship, and that is Alexis Bustillos.[1443.33][1443.33](applause) Alexis is the daughter of Gabriel and Elaine Bustillos. Her honors, awards, and recognitions include Outstanding Student in Pre-Cal, Employee of the Month at HEB, she's NTCHS member, and Presidential Award. She's the MHS Cosmetology Secretary. She volunteers with Toys for Tots, Midland College Theater, and the Midland Yucca Theater. She plans to attend Midland College with the Legacy Scholarship, and then transfer to Texas Tech to become a Sonogram Tech. Winner of the MISD Board of Trustees Scholarship is Charles Schmidt.[1485.66][1485.66](applause) Again, Charles is a four-year academic letterman. He's received numerous recognitions in cross-country and track and field. He's National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, where he's a Vice President. Again, participates in varsity cross-country and track, and he's a member of the Dog Pack. His community service includes, again, one-to-one tutoring, Midland Recording Library, First United Methodist Church, Vacation Bible School, Keep Midland Beautiful, Helping Hands, Meals on Wheels. When do you do your homework? Anyway, congratulations to Charles Schmidt.[1523.66][1523.66](applause) And the winner of the MISD Joseph Baresi Scholarship is Colton Powell, sorry, Colton.[1534.04][1534.04](applause) Colton is the son of Doug and Cindy Powell. He's an honor graduate, a MOAS Delicate, two-year varsity football letterman. He's a Greater Midland Football League volunteer, and he plans to attend Texas Tech University to major in engineering. This year's winner of the MISD Memorial Scholarship is Abby Bartow.[1563.41][1563.41](applause) Abby is the daughter of Carol Evans and Bart Bartow. She is Texas All-State Band and Orchestra in trumpet for two years in a row. She's Midland High School Band Captain. She's a member of band and orchestra, obviously. She's worked with local and state dog rescues. She attends, she will attend Baylor University and major in music education, and she plans to eventually become a professional trumpet player. Now, for our, the Midland High Ready, Set, Teach students. I think a couple aren't here. Did Kira Couch make it? Okay. I don't know. Okay, Kaylee McCarty.[1610.54][1610.54](applause) Don't believe Andrew Sanchez, did he rob? No, okay. And Cheyenne Vigil.[1638.04][1638.04](applause) And I guess these guys will be back in four years asking you for a job, so.[1647.73][1647.73](applause) At this time, I'm gonna ask our CTE Department Chair, Jackie Dominguez, to come up here and introduce our board recipient.
Hi, Ms. Spencer, is my Business Professionals of America student. Jaime, can you come out?[1675.23][1675.23](applause) Jaime has been in BPA for three years. The first year that he came to me, he was in my graphics design class, and he just got into Photoshop. He just absolutely loved it, and so I got him into BPA. He designed a pen. We entered it into the competition, and his pen won. It was one of the state, the state of Texas National Pen that year, and so the next year we got him to enter it again, and he won again. So you have the pen, two of those, I believe. You have last year's pen and this year's pen. If not, we have it here for you. But he has won three years, and I'm just so proud of him. He's also very talented, of course, in art, and so it's not to lose him this year. But three years in a row, National Pen Design winner.
All right, we're calling the meeting back to order. Before the break, there was, no one had signed up to address public forum. Is that still the case? All right, still the case. We'll move on to district reports. For A, the Shack Annual Report, begins on page five of our packet. Any questions? Go ahead.
Team, let me just draw your attention. We have two of the members, the leaders of our Shack, Michael Mills and... We have two of the members, the leaders of our Shack, Michael Mills and Abijin Douglas. They've done a great job with the district. One of the main, and I know you all have read through the report, but one of the focuses that we had, especially for next year, and you're going to be asked to approve the list of members for next year. They've really worked hard to get more parents involved, get more community members involved. This has been a committee that has done a really good job for us, and all the issues that we've dealt with, some not very pleasant at all, but this committee has really stepped up. So, we appreciate their efforts. I just wanted to make sure that they're here, and if you have any questions about the report itself, they are here to answer your questions.
Questions, but I do have a comment. The breadth of the report was most impressive, so thank you so much for all your good work.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, thank you very much. We really do appreciate it. Thank you for coming too tonight. Alright. Next, District Report. Financials are on page 13 of our packet, and the list of bills are on page 21. Are there any questions about either of those two items? Alright, hearing none, we'll move to the Consent Agenda. 5A are minutes of our regular board meeting of April 11, 2016, and our Town Hall meeting of April 14, 2016. And Item 5C is Budget Amendments and Transfers. Are there any of those three items that need to be pulled for any reason? Alright, hearing none, they'll be approved by consent. Alright, Action Items. 6A, Public Hearing, Discussion and Possible Approval of the Optional Flexible School Day Program for 2016-2017. Assume I'm calling to order the public hearing at 6:10 PM on that very topic.
Lisa's memo starts on page 69 in your packet. As it states, "This is the eighth year we've asked you to approve this. This has been a really good program, which allows us to do some very creative scheduling for our non-traditional students, but also does not allow us to be penalized for funding for traditional attendance. So, after the hearing, I will ask you to approve this application again."
Alright, is there anyone that wants to come forward and give us their public comment to the board as part of the public hearing? We'll close the public hearing at 6:11 PM, and now move to the Action Item to whether to approve this action item. Motion by Mr. Isaacs. Second by Mr. Hernandez. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Action Item 6B, Discussion and Possible Approval of Shack Members. Those members are found on page 82 of our packet.
Team, and again, we really stress trying to get more of our community members, and especially parents, involved for the next school year, and I think we've accomplished some really, we have some really good folks there who are going to be working very hard on behalf of our children on the Shack Committee. So, I would recommend the approval of our list for 1617.
Motion by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Isaacs. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. And thank you for all the hard work in recruiting them to serve again in many cases. Thank you. Alright, Action Item 6C, Discussion and Possible Approval of CEHI Instruction at Coleman. Our memo on that topic begins on page 83 from the side.
Okay, I would like Mrs. Isaacs to approach the bench, please, since this might be our last time to be able to do this. And in the greatest of detail, please explain to the board the pregnancy-related services that we are asking to provide.
ERS. Other rights known as ERS. We provide two services, pregnancy-related services for our young ladies who are expecting, and then CEHI, which stands for Compensatory Education Homebound Instruction, and that's for our new mothers for their six weeks postpartum period. We have to apply for a waiver to the state every three years, asking for us to be allowed to provide that instruction at Coleman High School instead of in the students' homes. We really like to do that because we want those girls to keep going to school, to have instructions, to have in mind, school is important, we really need to do that, instead of staying home and we're going to them. So, we need your permission to apply for that waiver to the state to provide services at Coleman High School instead of in the home. We do, if the young lady has doctor's orders to stay home, we do provide it in the home, but otherwise, they come to Coleman.
And during your retirement years, will you be helping providing these services to our young ladies at home?
I will be available by phone almost any hour of the day. That work?
Team, we've done a great job, and this goes back to what we were just talking about with the Shack Committee. This group of folks really has done a great job bringing these services down, the need for these services down. But Nancy's crew has done a wonderful job, especially serving our young ladies who are in need of these kind of things. I would recommend approval of the application, the waiver. The waiver, please.
Motion by Mr. Hernandez. Second by Ms. Nicholson.
Alternative one is the waiver.
Yeah, we were asking to approve the waiver.
Prove the application for general state waivers for pregnancy-related services on campus compensatory education home instruction. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Isaacs.
Alright, Action Item 6D, Discussion and Possible Approval of Meal Price Increase for The information begins on page 84 of our packet.
Team, as the memo from David explains, this will keep us compliant with the USDA guidelines, and it also will be used as a recruiting tool. The excess funds that will be done on this, we're going to use that as a recruiting tool and a retention tool to try to bring up our CNS staff another additional $2 per hour, David? Is that correct?
Yes.
I would recommend approval of the increases.
Motion by Ms. Nicholson. Second by Mr. Isaacs. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Going to Board. Action Item 6E, Discussion and Possible Approval of Competitive Seal Proposal Beverage and Snack Vending Machine Services. The information begins on page 85 of our packet.
Team, we had one company apply for our vending machine services, that is Coca-Cola, and I would recommend approval of the bid from Coca-Cola.
Motion by Mr. Bishop? Oh, Mr. Isaacs, sorry. Second by Mr. Hernandez. Any other comments or questions? My hearing's not here. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Alright. Action Item 6F, Discussion and Possible Approval of Competitive Seal Proposal Components One of the Professional Development Request.
Team, you actually approved two and three, Component Two and Three last month. We needed to do some more work on Component One. We have the bids back, and the recommendation is to stay with Lead Ford, correct, Patrick? Lead Ford for a grand total of $94,560, and of course, Lead Ford, as you've been told on many reports, has become one of our cornerstones of our academic programs, our TNL division. So, we're very proud to stay with him. We think we're definitely moving forward academically with their services. I would recommend that you approve the bid from Lead Ford for $94,560.
Is just for one year? Because I know professional development is a subject that will be addressed with Educate Midland. This is, I'm just confirming it's the last sentence there, it's just for one year?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Isaacs. Second by Ms. Nicholson. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Alright, Action Item 6G, Discussion and Possible Approval of Competitive Seal Proposal Copy Paper.
Team, we have a recommendation to accept the bid from Office Depot Inc., who was the low bidder at $132,300. I would recommend approval for our copy paper.
Motion by Mr. Hernandez. Second by Ms. Nicholson. Any questions?
Actually, that's a substantial savings. We were paying $29 per case, and this bid gets us down to 22.
22.50.
22.50. So, that's a very substantial savings. As we're going through cutting budgets, this will certainly help campuses, because this is one of the biggest costs.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Alright, Action Item 6H, Discussion and Possible Approval of Competitive Seal Proposal Professional Turf and Landscape Maintenance Services. The information begins on page 88 of our packet.
Team, we have a split, a recommendation for a split award on this, and you can see the different options that we provided to these guys, and we would like to offer Option One and Two to turf specialties of Midland, Texas, and Option Three to M3 landscaping. Correct, James? Sound good? Okay, I would recommend approval.
Motion by Ms. Nicholson. Second by Mr. Isaacs. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Board. Action Item 6I, Discussion and Possible Approval of Competitive Seal Proposal Renovations to the Kitchen at Sam Houston Elementary School, part of our 2012 Bond Funding Initiative. Information begins on page 90 of our packet.
Team, this is one of those projects we were waiting on to make sure that we had enough funds to cover it from our bond of 2012. We actually do. James, between the Facilities Committee, Karen, and James and Angel, and the administration of this, James and his crew, Vaunee, all the crew, we have identified that we are going to be able to do this kitchen renovation that's much needed at Houston, and it'll be for $340,000, and this will be under budget. Total budget amount would be $377,000, and we're in the bid is for $340,000. From, is that base per arm? Arm crossed. Construction. I would recommend approval.
Motion by Mr. Fuller. Second by Mr. Hernandez. Any questions?
Curiosity question for David. Is there, how much money is still remaining from 2012? We were thinking we might have run out.
Well, we're doing it, but there's some other projects that we've still got. We are getting close to the end of the project. James and I met last week and discussed the remaining projects that we have on board still, and there's resources to progress. Now, we are finalizing the remains of the bond that we have, and we want to maintain that we stay within budget and stay within our guidelines. So, there are a few projects that we have conferred, and we'll be finishing those up.
So, none of the planned projects are being left out?
No, that's what we're doing right now.
One way down to the, okay, good deal. Thank you.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you very much. Alright, last action item is 6J, Discussion and Possible Approval of Personnel Appointments. Those recommendations begin on page 92 of our packet.
Team, I'd recommend those, subject to assignment for professional contracts.
Motion by Mr. Isaacs. Second by Ms. Nicholson. Any questions? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Alright, our last agenda item is our Budget Workshop for the 2016-17 School Year.
Okay, team, from the preliminary numbers, and the preliminary workshop we did last month, I wanted to bring you some more definitive numbers and some more definitive scenarios for what we have right now. We've got a long summer to work on these things, and I've given, at the very end of this, I've given some suggestions about what I'd like to, what I'd like to recommend to you as we go through the summer toward adoption at the end of August. So, I'm going to throw a lot of numbers at you. We'll go through the, just the, first of it is about the same thing I showed you last month, but I'm going to throw a lot more numbers at you. Please stop me if you don't understand anything, or if you don't know. I'm actually going to, the power, all the numbers are on the PowerPoint, but I'm going to email you every spreadsheet that backs up those numbers that David's been producing for us over the last month or so, especially since we got the certified estimates from the appraisal district. So, I will make sure that you have all the backup information as soon as I get into the office in the morning. Okay, we talked about this. We talked about the three drivers of public ed revenue, taxable values, local tax rate, and daily average attendance. And of course, what was giving us the most heartburn this year was the scenarios that we had in the taxable values, that we were hearing anywhere from a 15% loss of mineral values all the way to about a 40% loss in mineral values. As of Friday before last, our appraisal district has sent us the certified estimates. These are not written in stone yet, but the certified estimates, it looks like we will be at the 10% reduction on the total taxable values. Mineral values, it looks like it's going to be about a 25% loss. And I think I showed you the sheet from the appraisal district. Residential, pretty much stayed pat, a couple more things, but then the mineral values and the company assets actually, you know, did see a significant drop, but did not see a more significant drop than the 10%. So, the scenarios that we talked about, 15 and 20% drops, hopefully, I understand hopefully, will not come to fruition. The appraisal district still has all the protests to undertake before the end of July, when they will give us truly the certified estimates. But we're thinking about the $18 billion mark, a loss of about $2 billion, is very, very solid for our planning purposes for the budget. Okay? Any questions? Alright, same information on the tax rate, guys. Right now, and we've had for quite a while since the compression of the tax rate several years ago, we're at $1.04 on MNO. We're a dime for interest and sinking for our debt, total rate of $1.14. And please remember, the issue that we're dealing with is that you do not have the discretion as the school board anymore to set a tax rate above the $1.04. The legislature has taken that ability away from you, and if we do make the decision, if you make the decision to raise any pennies, it's got to be done by a tax rate election, and we have to ask permission of our electorate. Okay? And then we talked about the ADA, and I'm very pleased, and I've been telling our teachers that I'm very pleased with them and their efforts this year. We were almost two percentage points below the state average for average daily attendance a year ago. We're not quite up to the 96 yet, but we're a lot better than the 94.6. So, I'm really looking forward to getting those final numbers, see what we're going to do, so we can keep improving on ADA. Okay, we discussed this. To date, David is just about to finish off sending our $47 million recapture dollars through August, I believe. The checks will be written through August, and we will have sent $95 million out of the district of our tax dollars to Austin to redistribute the wealth by the end of the 15-16 school year. Alright, this number has changed, because I think I gave you a pretty wide range in last month's March's presentation, but right now, depending on the scenario that we found inside on, right now, the recapture payment for the 16-17 school year could be between $48 to $58 million. And I'll show you all those numbers in just a second. Okay, everybody, everybody good? Alright, so, we talked about the, uh, we talked about the scenario right now. Based on a ten percent drop in taxable values and based on an add-to-arm tax rate of a dollar four, that would be our taxes, a hundred eighty-two million, six hundred and thirty would be what we would bring in with a dollar four. You add in the, the little bit of state aid and a little bit of federal aid that we do get from the, uh, from the state and from the, from the federal government and we're looking at a total revenue of about two hundred, almost two hundred and seven million dollars. Um, we talked about this, to stay where we are now, to stay in the same staffing patterns, um, uh, the same, the same budget, uh, appropriations that we did for this year's budget, we would need two thirty-two, which includes this year, the forty, the forty-eight million dollar, uh, recapture payment. We're at a budget deficit right now of twenty-five point seven million dollars, uh, with the, with the estimated, uh, um, uh, the estimated revenue, excuse me, the estimated, uh, uh, estimates, uh, what their, uh, what this appraisal district is looking at.
And that's, and that's without any cuts and without any tax rate increase.
Dollar four, staying the same appropriations we did this year. Yes, sir. Okay? Okay, so we discussed this.
Dr. Warren?
Yes, sir.
I wanna make sure I, I heard you correctly.
Okay.
And that is maintaining our same staffing pattern.
To, to maintain the, James, the two hundred and thirty-two million is the, is this year's appropriation, what we would need to have if we stayed in this year's budget moving forward. If we had the same needs, if we needed the same staffing patterns, everything that we did this year, that's not planning, if we, if we, if we have growth, if we have student growth, whatever program needs we have, if that is just staying pat what we did this year, we're at a twenty-five point seven million dollar deficit and that's at the, as maintaining the same tax rate. Okay? Okay, so we talked about the savings. Uh, your executive team has worked very hard since Christmas identifying several different, uh, ways, knowing that, uh, cuts very well are gonna be coming for this next year's budget. Um, and, and one of the things that I said, you, you know, I just, you know, I just finished doing, um, um, four, uh, budget workshops for our staff and I did, we did one for our PTA, uh, uh, folks. We had a good, a group of them show up. You know, what really, what really is unfair about our system right now is, you know, acad- I mean, financially, MISD because of your leadership, because of the work done by our staff, we're in really good financial shape. It's just that this next school year is gonna be such an anomaly with the system that we're working under, the recapture that we're having, the, by, by, and then the drop in, in estimated values, i- in, in taxable values. Most Texas school districts, most school boards of Texas school districts, you don't have to deal with these, that huge fluctuation of your, of your tax base. So that's what, that's what really is the, is the kicker to all of this and even in, when we, when we get a ruling, if we ever get a ruling from the Supreme Court, it won't affect us for next year. It, it, it won't. So we're gonna have to, we've gotta make plans this year to stay financially sound so that we can plan for the future. So, the possible savings that your executive directors, your, your chiefs have looked at over the last several months, uh, we've looked at initial cuts and this is what we're doing, our planning processes right now, our staffing processes is about twelve point three million dollar reductions. If we have to go to a next level of cuts based on our decisions moving forward, based on your decisions moving forward, we, we've got a plan for a little, over fourteen and a half million dollars of cuts. And then worst case scenario, if we have to go there, we're, we've, we've looked at a plan to cut, uh, more than eighteen million dollars from our current M and O appropriations. So, those are, that's what we're looking at, big picture. We've already done the work, we've already done the research, we've looked at everything that, that is remaining in our budget and, and we've done, we've done that work and I'll, and I'll show you, I'll show you details of that in here in just a second. Alright, so, initial budget considerations, the things that I need to draw your attention to are several different scenarios. Alright, I've just shown you this. Ten percent drop, dollar four tax rate, we're at twenty-five point seven million dollar reduction and that does include for next year, a forty-eight point one million dollar recapture payment. Alright, so if we stay with a dollar four, the initial cuts, so the twelve point three initial cuts, we can get down to about thirteen point three. You have very graciously allowed us to use three more dollars of our, three million more dollars of our fund balance to reduce that deficit anymore. So using the initial cuts that we've identified, we can get down to about a ten point three million dollar deficit budget right now. This is May, we don't, we don't, uh, approve until the end of August, but right now, we're still looking for ten million dollars, uh, if we stay in those kinda scenarios. If we do the midline cuts, the second level cuts and the fund balance transfer, we can get down to a little over eight million dollar deficit and then if we do the last level of cuts, the eighteen million dollars, we can get down to four point six. Okay? Alright, the next several templates that are, that are in your packet is the scenarios of the TRE. If, if you decide, if we decide to ask for more pennies on the tax rate, I wanted to make sure you knew every single number there was out there and the issue there. So here's your analysis and this is per penny. We've, we've given you, David's done a good job of analyzing every single penny after a dollar four, so you'll know what it does for us and to us. So, first scenario is that every, every one of these is a ten percent loss of values, but then we go up a penny every time. So if we go to a dollar five, if we ask for you for, for one penny, we go from a twenty-five point seven dollar deficit to a twenty-three million, point eight million dollar deficit. So you recover about two million dollars, you gain about two million dollars revenue, but you go up and you, and I've given you the recapture payment for each of these scenarios out there on your template and I will email you all this so you don't have to hurt your eyes by, by the little ink. But, uh, that, uh, um, that's, that's the difference between what a penny does for us, uh, from going from a dollar four to a dollar five. So, there's your scenarios. For the initial cuts we're talking about right now, we can get down to an eight point three, we would still need to do fund balance, uh, transfer of three million. For the second level cuts, a fourteen point six, we get, get down to six and the third level cuts, uh, we can get down to about two point seven away from being a balanced budget. Okay? That was, that's one penny. Penny two, to a dollar six, would get us about four more million dollars. It would, it would only raise our, it, it, our recapture would about, would, would stay about the same because these, the dollar five and the dollar six are the last of what we call the golden pennies and we've talked about that before. From a dollar to a dollar six, the state gives us golden pennies, which means they're not recapturable at the same rate as the pennies beyond a dollar six. So your recapture would stay about the same, forty-eight million dollars and then there's your, there's your cuts. We could go from six point five million dollars using those initial cuts of twelve million all the way down to under a million dollars if we did the budget transfer to eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand if we had to do the, the most extreme cuts to the district. That's two pennies. Okay? We still, based on these scenarios, after two pennies, don't have a scenario yet where the bal- the budget is balanced. Alright? So, penny three. Penny three, our deficit goes down to twenty-two million, the recapture goes up to right at fifty. The scenarios, uh, initial cuts, we could get it down to six point seven, second level cuts to four point four and third level cuts, three, uh, nine sixty-six. So, I, okay, I need you to understand the system, the way the system works against us. The, the rate we could get, i- if we made the most atrocious cuts, we could get down to eight fifty-seven with two pennies, but with three pennies, we could only get down to nine sixty-six. We actually lose money going to penny three because of our recapture rate. Okay? Alright, penny four, dollar eight. We could get our deficit down to twenty dot, twenty million dollars with a fifty million dollar recapture. Excuse me. Our scenarios, four point eight on initial cuts, two, six, two point six on second level cuts. Alright, after four pennies, if we rose, if we rose the, the, uh, tax rate to a dollar eight, we actually now have a scenario that we could balance the budget with the budget transfer, with a, with a fund balance transfer. If we did, if we went up to four cents, if we did the most atrocious cuts, the eighteen million, and if we transferred more than three million dollars into the, uh, i- into the, the M and O account, we could balance the budget by two, about eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Alright, for, with four extra pennies. Alright? Penny's five, five cents, we could go down about nineteen million dollars, fifty point six recapture. For initial cuts, about three point six, for second level cuts, one point three, and then we could, we could balance the budget, uh, uh, just by, with a budget transfer of eight hundred and, uh, eighty, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, we would be balanced with the, with the worst cuts that we, we could think of. And, and using a little bit of fund balance. Six cents to a dollar ten, we lower the deficit to eighteen. Initial cuts, we could get down to two point seven with fund balance, four ninety-nine with, uh, second level cuts and again, we could balance the budget. We're almost balanced right then without a, a budget transfer, without a fund balance transfer on the third level cuts at tenths, a dollar ten, six cent, uh, extra more pennies. For seven cents, we go down to seventeen million dollars, seventeen point two million dollars. We re- we raised the recapture rate to almost, uh, fifty-two point five million. For the initial cuts, we could get down to one point nine million and then for seven more cents on our tax rate, on the second level cuts, we could balance the budget using, using fund balance. So there's your first scenario on the second level cuts that we could balance the budget with seven cents. And then, uh, and then we would actually be in a, uh, uh, we would actually be able add back to fund balance a little bit if we did the third level cuts, about eight hundred thousand dollars for, uh, the third level cuts. Alright, eight cents, we drop the deficit to four, uh, sixteen point four, we go up to fifty-three million on our recapture. Alright, then we're dropping one point one initial cuts, we have, we could balance with fund balance on second level cuts and we would be about one point six million in the black with third level cuts, with no fund balance transfer. Nine cents to a dollar thirteen, we will drop the deficit to fifteen point six, we'll go up to about a fifty-four point four million dollar recapture. First level cuts, we're down to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars with a, with a fund balance transfer. We could balance it at nine forty-four with, using fund balance on second level cuts and we're to the good of two, almost two point five million dollars for third level cuts with nine cents. Alright, ten more cents and we've only got four more cents left after, uh, three more cents after this. Dollar fourteen, we would drop it to fourteen point seven with a fifty-five per, uh, million dollar recapture. That would bring us down, alright, with ten cents, with another dime, uh, to dollar fourteen. This is the first scenario that we could actually balance the budget, uh, with just the initial cuts of twelve million dollars, uh, and using fund balance. So, so ten, uh, ten cents is another, uh, um, bookmark there for you. That's the first skene- scenario that we can use, uh, that we can just do the twelve point three million dollars in cuts and stand, balance the budget. We would only have to use a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars if we did the mid-level cuts and then we'd be up three point two million, almost three point three million if we did the eighteen million. Eleven cents, we drop the, uh, we drop the deficit to almost four, to about fourteen million dollars, but raise the recapture to four, fifty-six. And then there's your, there is your cuts, uh, you, we only have to use one point six million dollars to balance the budget with initial cuts. We would be in the black, no, no, uh, fund balance transfer for eleven cents at, and se- with second level cuts and then we're four million dollars to the good for third level cuts. And then two more cents left with twelve million, with twelve cents, we would lower the deficit to thirteen million to a, with a fifty-seven million dollar recapture and there are the numbers for that, all balanced with those cuts. And then the last penny, that, because the dollar seventeen is the statutory cap, that's the hard cap the state says that no school district can go over, we would drop the deficit to twelve point two million with a fifty-eight million, that's the high end of what I just showed you, the ranges from forty-eight million to fifty-eight million. Uh, this would be the only, this would be the only, um, um, choice if you wanted to make, um, a balanced budget without doing any fund balance transfer. We could do that with the initial cuts on thirteen cents and then, uh, be about two point three million to the good for second level cuts and then five point, say, almost five point eight million dollars to the good with third level cuts. So, as we move forward, I wanted you to know every single penny and how they affected the deficit, how they affected recapture, so that we can spend the next two, two months, the next three months really digging down into this, um, as we continue the budget process. I just wanted to throw you a lot of numbers at you. Alright, so I gave you the example last, last month, a month before last, of the cuts that the, the team truly worked on. Um, what I told our staff, the, 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 the true issue we have this year is we've been trying to keep these cuts as far away from the staff themselves and as far away from the classrooms themselves as we could. Uh, everything really has been done operationally and it's usually been done on vacated spaces. We've, we've just done away with positions that we have not been able to fill in the past and that's what, that way we've been able to manage the budget, especially through the recapture years. Uh, it has put a real strain on us, James and the crew have, it's been a real strain on them operating the school district operat- operationally, but we've not had to hit the staff and we've not had to hit the classrooms with any true cuts. For another, at least twelve million dollars cuts, this is, this is really the, the big ticket items that we've looked at from, uh, from asking our staff to contribute now to health insurance, to reducing FTEs both administratively and on campus levels, uh, the annuity, the support positions, the administrative support positions that we have, the incentive programs, all those things, um, that's the big issue for us moving forward. Um, what can we do to negate as many of these cuts as we can if we, if, if we're forced to make cuts and we know where we're going to be? Uh, but how do we do that in an efficient manner, especially trying to, you know, number one, trying to keep them from the academic programs and number two, trying to retain and recruit the best staff that we can? So, here's what I'm looking at. Um, we really, uh, this is your, this is your May, as a board, this is your May budget workshop. What I would like to do, after I have sent all of you the spreadsheets, the backup information for this, I would really, we really need to get a, Tommy and Jay and I and, and Rick and David and his crew really need to sit down and really start digging down into the, into the weeds on all of this. So I would like to just kinda do, kinda set up a regular pattern for the next two to three months of, uh, of, uh, finance committee meetings, um, then budget workshops a- as, as we make, especially as the finance committee makes recommendations moving forward, that we can present them to the board, uh, during the bu- bu- budget workshops and the board meetings and keep that rotation in until, uh, the last thing that you do at the end of August is budget, uh, board, uh, budget and tax rate adoption. So that we can, uh, we can have a process of committee looking at, making decisions, bringing recommendations to the board, board making decisions, going, going back and working on those decisions, how they affect the budget, going back to the committee, going back to the board, so we can just kinda set a, 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 a rotation of doing that throughout the, uh, throughout the remainder of this school year and then the summer. I think that would be very good, just to make sure we're all on the same page with what we've gotta look at because, again, the number one thing that we need to do is look at every single alternative, uh, uh, again, so we can, we can do our best to keep as much cuts away from the classrooms and away from the staff as we can. Okay, with all that good news, give me your, give me your questions, any, anything. Yes, sir.
Alright, if you, if we could go back two slides, please.
That one?
This slide, yeah, the example appropriation cuts. Those cuts total approximately twelve million dollars.
This, this one, this is, these are the big ticket items and this is about eleven and a half of the twelve and a half million dollars.
Alright, and that's, that's my first question is, are all these cuts included in the, uh, twelve point three initial cuts?
Yes, sir.
You have in all these scenarios?
This, the, this is the, the foundation, this is the backbone of the, of the cuts that we've made. Like I said, there's only a, a couple of more million dollars, there're only about a, a, yeah, a few hundred thousand more above this that were smaller ticket items. This is your foundational cuts.
Alright, and I don't mean to, especially with all the MISD folks in the audience, I don't mean to diminish the impact that the other cuts would have on job satisfaction and so forth, but is it correct to say that the, that in particular, there are two cuts that would affect staffing on campuses, that being the second item? Eliminating district slash campus full-time teaching equivalents, is that correct?
Correct.
Of two point eight million?
Full-time, yeah, full-time equivalents.
Alright, so that, that, that's, that's an elimination of teachers on campuses, included in that amount?
That included in that is the eliminate, elimination of both elementary and secondary staffing.
So that's reducing the number of teachers teaching our students?
Yes.
All right.
That, that increases the teacher-student ratio, doesn't it?
Yes, sir, it does.
All right, and then the, the next one that I'll say directly, it looks like could, depending on your answer, impacts ac- academic instruction in the classroom is the fourth item, eliminating district administrative support positions, or is that the academic coaches?
That is, that's the bulk of it, yeah.
Roughly what percentage would you estimate are the academic coaches? So about nine thirteenths of that number would be academic coaches?
Nine hundred thousand dollars of the one point three would be your academic coaches.
Nine thirteenths, that's what?
Oh, I'm sorry, my, my, my.
Yes?
So then how many would be left of the academic coaches?
Jill? Twenty-six? Yeah, about twenty-six.
All right, so if you take the, not the, the central office positions, being eliminated, aren't important, but for purposes of my question, if you take the two point eight million dollar teaching, number two item, and you add nine hun, and you add the nine hundred thousand rough component, uh, that's part of the academic coaching part of the one point three, the nine hundred and two point, that's three point seven million, almost four million, correct? All right. So, but that, that four million on those two items are included in the twelve point three initial cuts?
Correct.
In all your scenarios?
Correct.
All right, so in order to, so if those total four million, then if you take those off the table, sort of speak, you don't want to, you don't want to do any of these things, but I, I'm just saying, I'm advocating, you don't want to especially do those two things, then the, the, uh, the, the level one cuts would be reduced from twelve million to eight million.
Correct.
All right.
And, and, and you're saying it right, but understand, we don't want to do any of these.
No, I understand.
We think this is going to be, um, for, for at least one school year, that this is going to create significant harm to our, all of our programs across the board.
All right, so what I, what I would like to see at the, whatever the next, is it, whether it be a board meeting or a finance committee meeting, I'd like to see an alternative set of scenarios run in which the first, the, the cut number is not twelve point three, but whatever is more like eight million, or whatever the, whatever the number is, whatever twelve point three is less, what it looks to be approximately four, almost four million, so it'll be around eight million dollars. Okay?
Yes.
What I would like to see is what the numbers would be if we don't make the cuts, it looks like it would affect the number of teachers or the ability of our academic coaches to coach up our teachers, particularly since we have so many young teachers in our district. Uh, and even if we did those scenarios, is it also correct to say, if we, if we reduce the cuts from twelve point three to roughly eight point three, in order to get to the point where we, we make eight point three million dollars of cuts, we, we would use three million dollars of fund balance, unrestricted fund balance. And then what the difference would be made up would be as a possible tax rate increase.
Okay.
So that the end of the day, we, what? Well, I'm, I'm saying, I guess where I'm coming from is I'd like to see the scenario where, yes, we make budget cuts in light of the reduced revenues that we have as a result of dropping tax property values. But no, we don't make cuts that directly affect, affect the number of teachers we have on campuses or their academic coaches. Yes, we use our fund balance of three million dollars, but anything more than that has a jeopardy of, if it's true, of, of jeopardizing our cash flow ability, we'll be, we're already less than three months using the three million dollars under this scenario. We, we jeopardize our ability to meet, meet our cash flow requirements if we go any further, is that correct? All right, so we make, we make cuts, we use fund balance that's available, even though we're dropping below than what ideally we would like, but still at three million and stop there, we would still meet our cash flow obligations, correct? Going forward? If we only use the three that we're talking about in these scenarios? And then, yes, the balance, under this scenario, what I'd like to see, the balance would be made up by a proposed tax rate increase that I would hope if we approved that, the community would support it, so that, yes, we make cuts, yes, we use fund balance, but no, we stop short of eliminating teachers or academic coaches, which could affect the quality of instruction in our classroom, and that the community viewed as an investment in our children's future, rather than simply, oh, well, we've got to cut teachers and academic coaches just because we have less money and we just have to tighten the belt, and tell those students, oh, I'm sorry, you just happened to go through a few years at MISD, we had less revenues, those are, that's the scenarios I would like.
Can do, absolutely.
Thank you. You're, you're kind of getting to what I was going to be calling the sweet spot, where, where is the fine balance of use of fund balance versus tax increase in effort to reduce the number of cuts, from whether it be twelve million or, or whatever number it is? The, the cash flow component is going to be mainly in that fourth quarter, correct? October, November, December. So we could put ourselves in a position of needing to borrow if, if we were to use more than three million. And that three million, is that your number, or is that the transfer number that Ryder has, has used before?
That, uh, if you recall, last year, y'all gave us the authority to use ten million dollars in fund balance. Well, when, when, when our student enrollment didn't drop, we were able to, uh, uh, generate some additional revenues as a result of that in, in this fiscal year. We're anticipating those numbers to stay steady again for the sixteen, seventeen school year. And so, rather than using ten million this year, we're anticipating using seven. So that three million dollars is that leftover component of the, uh, fund balance that we were going to utilize. So if we were to go beyond that three million dollars, then we would, that's when we, or become, uh, in all possibility having to borrow funds to, to meet our cash flow needs.
Okay, so in all these scenarios, I want to make sure I understood what you just said, three million is the maximum use of fund balance in any of these scenarios, the way it was presented?
Yes.
Okay.
And whatever, whatever, uh, uh, structure you set it at, whether it's cuts and tax ratification election or in, in fund balance.
Three million was it? So, is this a one-time anomaly? Or do we need to be looking at future years to see? Maybe we take a little bit of a hit with fund balance this year, knowing that, that these numbers are going to change in future years. Shouldn't we be looking at a, at a future cash flow?
Absolutely, and, and now that we've got this.
That's what I want to see.
I typically, I, I budget five years, but we needed to get this estimate to get this first year to be able to, to, to determine what kind of budget analysis we wanted to do for sixteen, seventeen. But now that we've got this estimate, we can run out the numbers for the, for the next five year, or next four years, do a five-year cash flow.
That's, Rick, that's what I would sup, would support in saying that if we look at future years and how we expect this to impact us down the road, could help us decide what the sweet spot is for this upcoming year.
Are you saying that, Jay, assuming that, uh, the current lawsuit is going to be resolved and the impediments that get in the way will be eliminated?
No, that's, that would be the, the last item. I'm thinking that the, the, uh, may be a potential recovery in some of the valuations, potentially. The, the potential for the, uh, recapture to go down a little bit. Those kind of things could get factored in if we start looking at year two, three, four, and five. And then the, the extra gravy would be if we had some kind of relief from the Supreme Court that wouldn't take place until seventeen, eighteen school year, most likely. In other words, you're, you're saying that you're, you're not, let's, let's assume, because we do not know, let's assume that the, the current finance law remains the same, and let's budget accordingly and do our pro formas going forward, and set aside at least for the moment, the possibility we might get some relief. But if we get relief, one, it won't be anytime soon, it won't be for a year or two at the earliest, and two, we don't know if we're actually going to get any relief, even if the case is upheld in unconstitutionality.
And who knows what that would look like?
Yeah, right, yeah, we just don't know.
There's too many unknowns, and so, yes, we would, going forward, would, would budget on the current law.
Instead, budget on the current law and what we, what we do know, and not what we don't know yet.
And exactly as Mr. Isaac was saying, if we do, you know, the worst-case scenario would be we see another reduction in mineral values, uh, going forward. But we've seen the recovery, and it, and it's been steady at around, you know, in the low forties at least. This year's valuations were set at thirty-five dollars. So even going forward, if it were just to stay here, we would see an increase in values for twenty-seventeen. So, uh, looking, a little bit more positive next year than we were absolutely for this year.
See, I'm, I would like to see that, because that's where I want to see where the balance is. I might be able, be willing to take a little bit bigger hit to fund balance and not ask the community for as big of a tax increase. I'm not real interested in putting us in a position of having to borrow, though. As a school district, I don't like the way that even sounds or appears.
Unfortunately, it's very expensive, because you, you borrow it between, you know, six to nine percent, and you're only earning point one five percent.
And some of those will impact bond ratings, I'm most likely, which impacts future bond issues that we may want to do for whatever reason. So, we've got to preserve bond rating, uh, through all of this. So I'm, I'm really interested in looking at year one as it is, and then what year two, three, and four look like to see how we impact the community or ask the community to support us.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question in light of your observations, Rick, about, um, number two there, eliminating dis- district campus FTEs and academic coaches. My question is, what other groups are included in that particular reduction there, in addition to them?
We've got, uh, some, I think, two campus administrators, two, three campus administrators. Got, uh, we've reduced our librarians from, uh, from full-time FTEs at the secondary level to half-time, uh, at the campus level. And, and, uh, just some other support personnel, some, some collegiate coach positions were, were reduced. So, there's, there's some administrative positions at the campus level as well built into those.
I realize this, this next question is asking for a lot. But in light of these cuts, of suggested cuts, on the academic side, what has the teaching and learning team concluded about the impact that eliminating FTEs and academic coaches, shifting librarians all over the district? What has been the conclusion relative to that particular issue?
Yes, sir, I can.
Because I don't see, well, first of all, I know things are unfair in the world. I, I basically don't see us being able to do as much as we are doing now with less.
I think Dr. Warren has mentioned it before, we are still, uh, trying to recover from the cuts of two thousand and eleven. Um, but we are making academic progress in the district. From a teaching and learning perspective, we do not like, uh, cutting teachers, nor do we like cutting, uh, academic coaches. It is my first priority, my first priority is always teacher in front of student, and then sec, close second would be instructional coach in front of teacher. Um, those are the two biggest a- assets from a teaching and learning perspective that, that we've got. So it definitely will hurt academic progress, uh, in the district.
Well, it just seems to me that it's going to work counterproductive to whatever, uh, education comes up with, or tries to.
I agree, uh, one question back to David. On the, uh, reminded me, on the attrition savings item of six hundred thousand, is that, is, is there any kind of, is that reflect the teachers we're not going to hire? Is that reflected in the FTE number, or is that a separate number?
That's a separate calculation. Typically, we, we average about two hundred to two twenty-five resignations and retirements. And typically what you do is as retirees, you hire, uh, less experienced staff. So you have an attrition savings there, instead of paying a sixty-eight thousand dollar teacher salary, you're only paying a forty-nine thousand dollar teacher salary.
There's no double dip there, you didn't count those lost teachers twice or reflect?
Did not account for that.
Okay, great.
Uh, it, were there a, um, decrease of teachers at the elementary level? Would that increased pupil teacher ratio all be absorbed by the higher grades? Or would you each up that twenty-two to one a little bit?
Right now, with the, with this level of cuts, the elementary cuts are six FTEs, and the secondary cuts are thirty-nine and a half.
So, I guess Dr. Warren, one of the things I, I mean, I, uh, look at, too, and I know it's, it's one of the things counted in. I'm, I mean, I'm a, I'm a, I guess a big fan of sports and stuff for, for all of our students as far as band and extracurricular activities, but, uh, two, rather than eliminate, and I know we're looking at it, but part of, on our examples as far as cuts, but as far as eliminating teachers and, and FTEs, I think our, our extra, extracurricular activities, uh, from a travel standpoint, I think needs to be, uh, looked at and dissected, uh, uh, pretty, uh, pretentiously, too, versus cutting our teachers and our, uh, FTEs out, uh, first and foremost, because it, it all starts in the classroom, uh, as far as I'm, I'm, uh, concerned, because if, if we're not learning, then that other, uh, is, is knowledge void.
Tommy, I mean, that's a great comment. Um, these numbers represent, and, and David and Coach Rowe and Mr. Horner have worked very hard on all these numbers, just like the rest of the exec directors. These numbers reflect reductions of athletic coaches. They reflect, uh, eliminating, uh, athletic periods for athletic coaches and putting them back into academic, uh, time slots so that we will help reduce the number of kids. And it's also the part of the travel budget is, I, I also reflect it in the athletics, so absolutely.
I mean, I guess where I'm getting at, as far as, uh, you know, sometimes some trips out of town, our, our band, our, our cheerleading squad might not be able to go to every out-of-town game. I mean, that's, if, if we're looking at saving some of our teachers and FTEs where we have those ladies and gentlemen in the, in the classroom, I think that's, that's a vital part of what we're here for.
Absolutely.
So.
And, and those are some of the things that we did in two thousand and eleven, we anticipate doing again. Like, uh, only, no out-of-town travel for band and, and, uh, sport teams.
Hope I don't get beat up when I leave, but that's.
Uh, those are things, obviously, that, yes, you're weak to say.
Other ques- any other questions or comments? All right, we are adjourned at seven oh six P M. Thank y'all. Thanks, everyone, for coming.